Mr. Brazel, would you like to join us up here so we can get going? We're waiting on you. Work to the crowd. Okay, good evening, everyone. Good evening and thank you for attending tonight. I'd like to call the work session to order. We have a busy agenda this evening, so I'd like to get started right away. The first item on the agenda is the discussion of the arch, tax, grounds, trail, greenway, and it will be started by Keith Hazelwood.
Thank you, and I apologize. I need to go to planning and zoning. Now, not that they're more exciting than this meeting, but, you know...
Would you like to come forward so that you're on the microphone?
All right, can I just stand here and to a microphone?
These are microphones, yes.
All right, that's a deal. I like these chairs. They're better than they were before. I just would like to just make a brief statement and say that when I was on the county council in 2000, Keith came and talked to Doug Fundaberk and myself about working on this campaign and what was going to be put on the ballot. Now, I can't speak for Doug Fundaberk, but I didn't sign up because I thought it was going to win. I signed up because I thought it was the right thing. And I was shocked when it won and passed the election. But I knew it was the right thing to do. And so, that's sort of where I'm coming from, looking at, and then your... Keith will talk about all these details, but I'm going to turn it over to him. There's really some good information. It's an important issue, and that's all I want to say. And I want to thank you for listening. As we said earlier this last week, just give me the facts. So, we're here to present the facts. Thank you.
I have one question.
Uh-oh.
Technical question. Bob, help me here because you said there's some inconsistency on your research today. Is the city charging for your TIF at Inozark? Are you charging Great Rivers Greenway on that?
You know, I'll be honest with you, Steve. You know, that's not like on the top of my head, but I will check. Should I call Bob?
I talked to Kelly Vaughn.
Oh, to Kelly Vaughn?
Yes. I had inadvertently received some billings from St. Charles City in the mail that they got mailed to the wrong address. And so, we had never seen them before. We had assumed that the city was actually billing Great Rivers Greenway for their portion of the tax that would be in the TIF areas. Because we had never seen any billings from the city as we see from the city of St. Louis, the issue was to us. We paid them that portion. So, we had always assumed that the city was billing. And so, I spoke with Kelly earlier this afternoon. Actually, she had been great...
Wish she'd let me know then. Yeah, okay.
And so, at this point, she's going to run down the actual payments that the city has made for that has built Great Rivers Greenway.
Okay.
But I don't have any information.
All right. Good. Well, I appreciate you bringing it up. And certainly, anything that's not happening, we did make sure happened.
Don't we have reason to believe they had to?
No, well, other than Susan's here. I spoke with her last week. She's saying she didn't have any of the...
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Right.
They had not paid, probably had not gotten the bill.
Did we know that?
I know that we have not gotten the bill from this meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, certainly...
So, are you willing to let them out of all the TIFs in the future?
Oh, now, Steve. All right. First of all, thank you for bringing that up. We'll make sure we find the information. Who should I call? I'll call Bob. Okay, Bob and I will talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Brazel. Mr. Hazelwood?
Thank you, members of the council, Mr. County Exec, and distinguished staff. I'm going to stand here just for a minute because I want to do some introductions in case you don't all know who's with us this evening. First of all, in the second row back there to our left is Peter Sortino. Peter's sort of the energy behind this ballot measure. Next to him is Tom Irwin, who is here in his capacity as the Executive Director of Civic Progress. Then, moving over to the other first row here to the right, Maggie Hales, who is the Executive Director of the organization that would actually have the responsibility for the arch work. That is a separate organization from the city of St. Louis and from Great Rivers Greenway. And then, you have Susan Troutman, who is, as I think you all know, the Executive Director of Great Rivers Greenway. I don't think any of the rest of the group behind them would be called upon to answer questions, but I may be wrong. Rob Epstein is the Chairman of the Board of Great Rivers Greenway. Ron Coleman is with the Open...
Open Council.
Right. Julie Mueller, as you may know, is one of the St. Charles County Representatives to the Board of GRG of Great Rivers Greenway. Pat Sullivan is another St. Charles Rep to that board. Mary Lee Britton is in the back, and so forth. So, anyhow, we have people available to hopefully answer questions. Do you want me to sit here, or it's your pleasure?
Sure, that'd be fine. Just so you're close to a microphone.
If I may, we have a bit of a PowerPoint presentation. But before I get into that, I'd like to kind of set a framework. This evening's comments, and I'm going to try and limit my comments to 10 to 15 minutes, but in first year of law school, there is a frequent reference to the marketplace of ideas. And as I have structured the presentation that I'm going to share with you this evening, I've been trying to sort of focus on what is the marketplace of ideas that we're dealing with here. I'm going to share with you what I think are seven salient points that speak in favor of this ballot measure being put on the ballot. There are some reservations, as we understand from the news media and other conversations. We will bring those up, and we're glad to try to answer questions that relate to those reservations. One of them has already been alluded to with the TIF issue and so forth. But in any event, I would ask you all to kind of think about, in the marketplace of ideas, where does balance fall as you listen to the benefits of this versus the reservations on this ballot measure? First thing I'd like to ask you to share with me is the idea in the marketplace of ideas that people love parks and trails. And for example, last week, last... If Jack could show the first slide, please. Last week's... Last Wednesday, St. Charles Journal had an article about Bromley Sick Park. It is in the handout that you have in front of you to make it a little easier to read. But one reason people love parks is just the sheer number of things that can be done there. And in this article, it speaks to fishing, it speaks to wildlife education, multi-use trails, bikers, hikers, equestrian uses. There's picnics that go on there. There's a visitor center going to be at Bromley Sick Park. There's a small meeting area, a park ranger satellite facility, a pond where dogs can swim, and even an astronomy site. What is there not to love about something that delivers that kind of quality of life? Then, in a recent article in Missouri Resources, which is published by the Department of Natural Resources, there was an article about trails that focused on trails. And so, on the next slide, Jack, if you would, you can't see it so well on the screen, but hopefully, you can decipher. This author of this article gave these various reasons why people love trails. The health aspect, the exercise that they get, the beauty of being close to nature, the fact that they can go from one geographic point to another in a very pleasant environment, the fact that they run into people and have some interconnectivity with other users of the trail system. So, I would hope that in the marketplace of ideas, we start this conversation with the notion people like parks and they like trails. Now, with respect to this ballot initiative, real quickly, the seven things that I would ask the council to consider as you weigh in balance whether or not to put it on the ballot. St. Louis, and I'm picking up on a theme that I think has been used by the county executive. St. Louis doesn't have mountains, doesn't have beaches, doesn't have various things that are... that appeal to what I'll call the quality of life component that people make their decisions on where to live. But St. Louis does have a wonderful, wonderful circumstance, a geographic circumstance, that it's got these great rivers, the Missouri, the Mississippi, and the Illinois. And off of these rivers, you have, as sort of vines off of branches, you have these greenways developed. And in fact, Great Rivers... The Great Rivers Greenway Program that started in 2000 was meant to develop those greenways. There are 45 of them, and 16 of them are in St. Charles County. So, this wonderful geographic circumstance that St. Louis has is leading us into trying to develop this interconnectivity that we have thanks to geography. So, the next slide, what you see is some of the details of this program. I'm going to kind of skip over that because I think that's something that I would encourage you to read and digest in a more sort of deliberative environment than this work session. But if you get to the next slide, you'll see what Great Rivers Greenway is doing in terms of trying to create and accomplish this trail system. This ballot measure would assist greatly in helping with that. One of the points that is frequently made about St. Louis is it is not appealing to young residents and keeping them here after they decide to leave us, whether that's after high school or after college. And if there is one quality of life infrastructure piece that we can offer that might be meaningful to that demographic, to that young demographic, it is this trail system. And I want to mention to you that actually, the next thing in the PowerPoint is an interesting article from the Wall Street Journal, and you have to unfold it because it's the entire page. This article was in last Friday's Wall Street Journal, and this is one of the main sections of the journal. It's called "Money and Investing." And the very centerpiece of this front page of the money and investing section of the paper deals with how bankers are leaving New York City. New York, if you look at the headline, has lost 26,440 jobs. St. Louis, I'm pleased to tell you, has gained 4,380 jobs. The young financial professionals seem to have some willingness to be relocated here. And I submit to you that if we can do things with our natural assets, our rivers and the trails that come from that, that will, over the course of time, pay big dividends. In addition to working with that natural asset, this ballot initiative raises, and I think this is a good thing, $760 million on a quite affordable basis. For the average person in the St. Louis area, it's going to cost $25 a year. For the average household, it's going to cost $57 a year. Certainly, as you think about raising $760 million from such a broad base, that is a real sizable chunk of money to go into parks and trails. And yet, it's being done on a basis that's affordable by the citizens. It's a limited lifespan. It has 20 years. That's a good thing. It comes with a $200 million private sector match from Civic Progress for the purposes of getting this done in...
Sorry, Keith, how much is it?
200. I think it's actually 210.
What's the average? You say average income is $57 a family. What's the average income in St. Charles County? Is that what you're referring to?
Well, actually, what we took was the revenue stream that we think this is going to generate and divided by the population. So, the revenue stream divided by that population created the $25 per person. And that's for the entire 1.7 million, St. Charles County, St. Louis County, and St. Louis City. It's $25 per person.
Per adult or per?
Per person.
Per person.
Per person. The average household is about $57. So, Aunt, my wife and I, two-person household, we're going to be paying somewhere between $50 and $57 bucks. Now, another... I view this as a real advantage, and I hope I don't get lost on this distraction. There's no federal money involved in this. We are not dependent upon the feds matching this money. We are not dependent on their decision-making process. We are not... I mean, I just... I don't want to say too much, but if they were to try to do any of this stuff, it would turn the $16 trillion debt that we have into a $16 trillion, $400 million debt. This is a good thing that we avoid reaching out for federal involvement in this process. If we want these... If we want this quality of life infrastructure for ourselves, for the St. Louis metro area, let's pay for it. Let's do it on our own terms. There would be significant tourism benefits, and I'd ask Jack to flip to the next slide. If you go... If any of you are AAA members, you might get this magazine. It's called Midwest Traveler. About a year ago, they issued a best of the Midwest, and I would ask you to kind of follow what they determine. Tourism benefits are meaningful to this discussion because as you look at what was measured by AAA, St. Louis was the best large city for a weekend. The Moonrise Hotel was the best small hotel. But then, the next thing you see is the Katy Trail State Park was the best bike trail in the Midwest as determined by AAA. Then, as you go over a little further, oh, and I might mention that actually, in second place, was the St. Louis Riverfront Trail. So, this wonderful geographic attribute that we mentioned earlier is showing up as the number one and number two picks in this tourism magazine. The last of the seven benefits that I want to allude to is the ripple effect for all our municipal governments, but especially two kinds of municipal governments. In St. Charles County, we have some really small municipalities who have miniscule or no park and trail programs because they just don't have the revenue. This program would give them a piece of that $760 million that they don't presently have. There's another kind of municipality, and that's... Cottleville's an example of the first one that I just gave you. For example, Scott Lewis told me the other day he has virtually no money to do parks and trails. But in the second category, we have some municipalities in St. Charles County who are maxed out on their dedicated park tax. St. Peters is in that category. It cannot ask for any more money from its voters under its park tax statutory authority. But this program would give them some additional revenue to do the good things that they do with parks. Now, I'm going to try and ramp up.
May I ask a question?
Oh, please.
So, Keith, if this is passed in St. Charles County...
Yes.
How much will be diverted by people like St. Peters and other cities that do TIF projects? Will existing TIFs be able to get this money or just the projects that have... are just the money that's already been approved? So, in other words, we got five or six TIFs out there now, and they're getting a portion of the monies being collected now. If this is added to it, will they... that... a portion of that also go to the existing ones, or will it just be new TIFs that are created? And how much money... what percent do you think is actually going to get into parks?
Steve, as you know, I'm not in the public finance world. I show up, do land use things. I just don't... I don't feel as though I have the background to really give you an answer. I am going to tell you, and I was going to say this anyhow, but we'll just segue to it right away. I think the points that are being made about TIF are very legit. I would hope between your efforts to reach out to our two sister jurisdictions, that something beneficial would come from that. If voters are asked to vote on a tax that is meant to support parks and trails, they ought to know that that money goes for that purpose. And if they... If we don't get... If we don't get something accomplished on a consensual basis, I know I personally would be willing to do what I could to make sure there's some kind of state control imposed on the situation. I don't know that that answers your question about past TIFs or future TIFs.
You know, CCRB's already exempt, and fire... I think fire districts are exempt up to one half. And I think it doesn't affect us, but they exempted the most recent metro tax in St. Louis City and County for exactly that reason.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're going to ask people to raise taxes, they ought to know that every dime they're paying actually goes to what you say is going to go to.
Exactly.
I don't understand that question. Tell me, would you... How are TIFs? I don't understand what you're saying. TIFs are... How are they associated with that?
Well, if the 316ths is imposed, that money will be subject to being diverted, just like our sales taxes. You know, 1.6 million a year has been diverted from our sales tax to pay for TIFs. Now, it's going to be a much smaller amount, okay? But there will be a percentage of whatever revenue is raised that will be diverted to these TIFs. Now, it may only be new TIFs that are created, but there's at least a theory that it would apply to the older TIFs. Does that explain it? Does that make sense, Joe?
I understand now. I didn't even see that, yeah.
And I guess, not trying to be quarrelsome with the county exec, but back to that marketplace of ideas, I would reach out to the council to say, "We've got these TIF issues. They are legitimate. The point... The theory that Steve espouses, I think a lot of people would agree with. The vast, vast, vast majority of $760 million will go to parks and recreation." So, in the marketplace of ideas, though it may have some fuzzballs until we either get this cooperation from our sister governments or we get some state legislative enactment on it, we need to keep our eye on that big picture. And I submit to you that in the marketplace of ideas, it would be in our best interest, and I think the best interest of all of your constituents, for us to try to accomplish this enhanced park and trail process.
I know you both have continuing questions, but I would like Mr. Hazelwood to finish his presentation before we get to the questions.
I was just going to suggest it's okay to be quarrelsome in the market of ideas.
Now, Jack, if you would go to the very last slide. Keep going. Keep going. These are all pages from the... Okay, that one right there. You'll all see. It's the last page in your handout here. These are numbers that, between Susan Troutman and Peter Sortino, will give you a notion of what the dollar figures would be to the local municipalities in the next five-year period, 2013, 14, 15, 16, and 17. So, for example, in Cottleville, where there is virtually no money available for any tax and trails, Cottleville would have 105,000 available to it in that five-year period. Some of the other municipalities that are larger have pretty substantial sums of money. Madam Chair, cost of elections, I don't know what to suggest on that. Unfortunately for GRG, it was created in a manner where it is dependent upon other jurisdictions agreeing to put its issues on the ballot. You control whether or not they get an opportunity to ask the voters for money. The trade-off on that is, in a sense, because you have that control, the burden of paying for the election falls to you. So, I don't know what advice to give to the county on how to deal with this tension that's created there. It may be you want to give up that control, in which case, they need to start paying for their elections. If you want to keep that control, I think maybe it's fair that you do pay for those elections if you see fit to have them. But there are all kinds of nitty-gritty details to that stuff. You know, there'll be a revenue stream created if this is passed. Maybe that's available to help pay for the cost of the election. Those are things for more knowledgeable people than me to deal with. Is there anything we can do to answer questions in the few minutes that we have left?
Yes, I would like to open it up for discussion. Would you like some of the people that you introduced earlier to come forward and join in this discussion and be available for questions?
Good evening.
Okay. Would you turn to you just very quickly introduce yourself. I know that Mr. Hazelwood already has, or tell us a little bit about who you are, what you're doing, and why you're here.
I'm Peter Sortino. Actually, one of my former jobs as President of St. Louis 2004, worked back in 1998, '99, 2000 to put together Great Rivers Greenway in that election back then. And I worked with the council back then to get it on the ballot. And I'm currently at Washington University, but I'm dedicating a lot of my time and some of my time to this effort.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Susan Troutman. I serve as Executive Director of Great Rivers Greenway. Here tonight to answer any questions. I also prepared a packet for you, and in that is a letter from me regarding this issue for your consideration.
So, I'm Maggie Hales, and I'm Executive Director of City Arch River 2015 Foundation, and we are the private partner with Great Rivers Greenway District in helping implement this plan. And so, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about what we've been doing.
We'll open it for questions. Mr. Brazel?
I got a couple of questions. Yeah, the money, if this is passed, who monitors the money?
Great Rivers Greenway is the public steward for the money and...
For all of it, both, all of it?
For the $100 million of all of the public money. The private money belongs to the conservancy. And to that point, the legislation required that the district adopt a comprehensive capital improvement program agreement which outlines all of the projects, how they're funded, and the district will have oversight for all of that money as a fiduciary agent.
Okay, then the next question is, as far as the bike trails that you're referring to, how do you plan on obtaining the routes for the bike trails?
For the greenway systems in the same manner that we have?
There's not a microphone in front of you. Could you just speak a little louder?
Of course. I'm sorry. Right now, we have... We start with a conceptual plan, and we open it up for public engagement. And you all are familiar with the Darden and the Bush Greenways and Bossher. So, we would continue to build out in the same manner we have, which involves...
The one I'm referring to is, in order to make the connection to the trails, do you go and do you make the plan and then use eminent domain on people's...
We do not have the power of eminent domain.
No power of eminent domain?
No, we don't. That is why we are a collaborative organization. And every project we have involves collaborative partners. And we do not go forward with a project if we do not have the approval of the landowner or the people involved.
Okay. And then, I think one last question. How come Jefferson County's not involved?
Peter, you went ahead.
Back in 2000, when this was formed, they're authorized to be involved and be a member. They had another item on their... on the November ballot that they wanted to pursue, and they, at the time, did not want to participate. But they could always join in the future. Actually, there were seven counties authorized on the Missouri side of the river to participate in the enabling legislation that was passed in 1999.
So, it must like they're getting a free ride, though?
Well, they don't have any projects.
We don't have projects in Jefferson County.
Yeah, they don't have the ability to do projects there.
So, we only serve St. Louis City, St. Louis County, and St. Charles County.
Okay. Mr. Corwin?
My question to you all is, why a sales tax? And the reason I ask you that is, any economist will tell you a sales tax is one of the most regressive taxes you could put on the populace, meaning that people with lower income levels, working families, pay a larger percentage of their income for that tax than people that are wealthier or even a business. Businesses collect, you know, pay... They may collect lots of sales tax, but they pay very little sales tax. There's other ways to raise it. Hotel taxes, fuel taxes, there's other regional taxes that they have. And my question to you folks is, why would you choose one of the more regressive manners of taxation instead of something that would be a little bit more progressive and fair?
Back in 1999, when we worked with the legislature, the current tax base is supported by a 1/10th of 1 cent sales tax. And the thought here was to continue that same type of tax for this measure at hopefully an affordable, will be considered to be an affordable amount. We did build in, in the legislation in 1999, some exemptions. The purchase of food and prescription drugs is exempt for the current 1/10th cent sales tax, and it will be exempt if the 3/16th cent sales tax were to be approved by the voters. So there are those exemptions built into the state law that authorizes us to move forward.
But no consideration of other taxes?
At the time, no.
Just to follow along, Councilman Brazel's line of, why are the Illinois counties not involved? I mean, obviously, they're very contiguous to the arch and the arch grounds across the river.
Don't you go ahead and impart those discussions?
This was part of the Missouri General Assembly, the legislation, and so in Illinois, it's a separate legislative body.
Yeah, there is a, back in 2000, there is a sister regional district called the Metro East Park and Recreation District, brought by the voters of St. Clair and Madison County. I think what you're asking, why isn't, weren't they included in the mix in this current proposal? And the real answer to that question is, is there is a part of this proposal that affects Illinois in terms of the design competition for the arch, because there was always a vision to extend that park to both sides of the river. Really, at the present time, that's not far enough along in terms of the details to go forward with that element of the project in terms of being refined and ready to go.
So the projects that are listed out in the program agreement are all on the Missouri side? All of the money would stay in Missouri?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Cronin?
What's the percentage of your whole projects is floodplain?
I didn't catch the last part.
What is the percentage of your trail project that is floodplain? I know you've got the River Ring bailed out there, which is 125.2 miles. Where are the levee districts at? For the most part, you can't even walk on a levee in a lot of the districts, let alone run a trail down it.
As you know, we work predominantly in watersheds. We do have trails on levees, the Riverfront Trail in downtown St. Louis, the Orson City Levee Trail, which we're getting ready to launch. Going back to the earlier comment, that we don't work in areas where people are resistant or do not want to have a greenway built. We stay focused in areas where people are excited about it, want to work with us, and we continue to build out that way. And we do not plan to change that method. It works very, very well for the district.
So if you do a cooperative thing with a levee district, say the Darden Greenway now, and everybody agrees, and everybody's happy, and you put your trail down, are you going to cost share it when a levee and a trail gets washed out? Or is the levee district going to have to pay to put it back? Or how's that going to work?
We have to pay to put it back. We have similar agreements with levee districts. And so the agreement spells out exactly who's responsible for what. And the levee district always maintains control of the levee. We have an easement on top of it. We lose the trail, we have to put it back.
But if it's completely washed out, that's a little bit different issue.
Well, then it's a choice of whether or not it's the right thing to put it there, and we will deal with that in time. But, you know, we have not had issues with the levee districts. We have lengthy and careful contractual agreements with them that spells out everyone's responsibilities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White?
I would just like to ask Ms. Hale to explain what her duties are and how this came about, and where she's going with it.
Sure. So City Arch River 2015 Foundation is a private foundation, and we have two roles in the project. One is to oversee the design, completion of the design. So the design competition resulted in the selection of Michael Van Valkenburg Associates with a jury and a governance process with partners overlooking that, and that finished about a year and a half ago. So we are completing that design, overseeing the architects, making sure all of that design is finished and put into construction documents so that it can be taken out to bid, and construction companies hired to carry it out. In addition, we're raising funds. And so we have committed to raise $210 million for the capital costs of the project, but we actually have a goal of raising about $250 million in total, because we're building the conservancy, and we want to make sure that we have money for ongoing maintenance and operation of all the improvements that we make.
Do we have, my turn, do we have, do we know at this point if St. Louis City or St. Louis County will have it on their ballot in April?
In St. Louis City, the bill was voted out of the Parks Committee of the Board of Aldermen last Thursday. It was second read on Friday, and they reconvene after holiday break on January 11th. We anticipate perfection at that meeting and final passage the following week. It typically takes four separate Friday meetings of the Board of Aldermen to approve the measure. And in St. Charles County, the bill will be introduced tomorrow evening.
St. Louis County?
St. Louis County, I'm sorry. St. Charles County could be introduced to, no, I'm just kidding. St. Louis County, I misspoke, will be introduced tomorrow evening.
Okay. And is this, is the whole plan contingent on all three counties passing, or two out of three counties passing, or ...?
The way the authorizing legislation was written was that it has to pass to St. Louis County, because the lion's share of the revenue is generated by St. Louis County. They have the largest tax base. And one of the other two jurisdictions, either the city or St. Charles County.
Okay, thank you. You had another question?
Ms. Hale, are you guys a for-profit or not-for-profit?
Not-for-profit.
So what's, so there's no, you guys don't make commission or anything off the funds you're raising?
No, no. Absolutely not. That would go against rules of fundraising, so, and donors' rights. We don't make any commission.
Are your salaries posted on ...?
Well, we're a private entity, and so our salaries aren't posted. It's not a matter of public record.
Mr. Cronin?
What I've read about this in the Post is, I'll ask you if this is accurate, for basically every dollar that the sales tax will collect, 30 cents of that dollar would go to St. Louis projects like Down the Arch. Approximately 30 cents in the dollar would go to Greenway Parks, or Greenway Trails, okay? 40% would be coming back to St. Charles County. Is that an accurate assessment? Okay? And if the district like mine, okay, I know my district very well, and the waterways in there, I don't think you're going to find farmers that want a bunch of people going through those trails, okay? Because, like, property rights are pre-emboldened. I have a hard time seeing how those folks are going to say, "We really think this is a good deal, that we're giving up a buck and getting 40 cents back." And I'd like to ask how you, knowing that in likelihood, there's probably nothing constructed in my district, how you expect me to explain that to my constituents?
Are you talking about greenways being built in the district? Because you can use your 40% for your local parks and recreation in any way you choose. You do understand that?
Yeah, I do that. I mean, I came as an alderman from a small town with 1,600 people in this county. And while I was an alderman, we ended up with two county parks, and we passed a tax for parks as a fee on a building permits. Different way of raising money, okay? And it's working for a little town, so, and we did not want to do sales taxes. We had no sales tax, and we were proud of it. But I guess what I'm driving at is, in my district, I don't see trails, I don't see facilities for trails in those lowlands. And we already have a really good county park system that's well-funded. I don't see the benefit of 40 cents coming to us when we get, our citizens, my constituents are paying a buck.
I just want to make sure we get the percentages, Craig. The 40 cents comes to you. We have no control, so you get to decide what you want. The 30% that goes to Great Rivers Greenway to build out the system, we will continue to build it out. And we know that we have users from all over the region using all the trails. In fact, we had over a million users every year. The Katy de Heritage Trail is one of the most popular here in St. Charles, as well as some of the trails in the Darden and Bossher. So to the extent that your residents use the trail system, it's available to them. It doesn't mean that we have to build in your city.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask one question first? I'd like to ask a question of Mr. Schnur, who all of a sudden is otherwise occupied.
Can I ask a quick one?
Sure.
40% that comes back to the county, how, does the statute say how that's distributed between the cities and the county government?
Yeah, what the statute says is that of that 40%, a certain percentage goes for municipal park purposes, and a certain percentage ...
Right, I just don't remember what the percentage was.
60%, what is it, 50, what is it, 60% goes to ...
It's spelled out in ...
50/50.
60% of 40% goes for county parks, 40% of the, it goes to municipal parks. But then you decide how that should be allocated to the municipalities.
This says 2.88 million to St. Charles County Parks and 1.15 million to municipal parks. So I'm assuming that's the percentage of allocation.
It's the same distribution formula that we currently have under the 1/10th.
Mr. Schnur, my question to you is, if no other jurisdictions have anything for the ballot in April, what would the cost be to the county to address this countywide?
If there are no other jurisdictions, countywide, we know that, to give you an example, in this past April election, the St. Charles Community College had to provide a reelection on the ballot, which cost them $160,000. The April, there are typically the other municipal races going on as well. And I think that probably will happen every April. So I think that you would be looking at a cost comparable to that, somewhere in the $160,000 to $200,000 each, just as a rough estimate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cronin.
Yeah, my question is, I think my constituents would probably maybe understand and appreciate the work that the Great River Greenways and they've done. I think they appreciate, they might appreciate the 40%. I think the big question is, the arch, that's a federally funded and owned park, is that correct? How do, how does this occur, that we're being asked to fund, or I don't know if the word's bailout, a federally, a federal park?
Simply stated, I think the arch is a regional icon. It's a symbol of the entire St. Louis metropolitan area. The notion behind this is that the Park Service on its own, or the federal government right now, has a very limited budget in terms of capital improvements. For the entire country, I think it's less than $100 million for over 400 national parks. The idea here is, is to do this as a local initiative and to get it done. It hasn't been updated or refreshed in for about 50 years, almost 40 years. And to make it a more desirable place for tourism, to bring more people to St. Louis, it's the center of the entire region's park or trail system. And it could be, it's an underutilized asset that could do a lot more economically for St. Louis in terms of tourism potential if it's freshened up. And there's a huge commitment on the part of the private sector in terms of wanting to get this done and supporting it. It was mentioned earlier that the amount of money that would be raised privately is about $210 million. That's for some of the physical aspects, but they're also going to go out and raise considerable amount of private money over and above the $210 million, so that there's maintenance endowment, and this can be maintained to a high-quality standard well into the future, which is very important also, if you're going to put that level of investment in the facility.
I just, may I add to that? So it's not a bailout, really, because the National Park Service is committed to continue to operate the park and maintain the park. When we say we're going to raise money for ongoing operation and maintenance, we want to help pay for the increased costs that will occur as a result of these improvements. So when we expand the museum with private dollars, not public dollars, the cost of maintaining that museum is going up, and we've agreed from the private side to help pay for that increase in costs. They are continuing to operate the park, to mow the lawn, to water, and they will continue to do that. They do have annual funding to carry that off. In addition, it doesn't show up in our papers, and it probably should, but right now, the Park Service is donating in-kind services of program managers, which is a staff of 50-plus people from Denver, who are construction and design experts. And they're providing this service that we would otherwise have to go out and buy on the market, and it's valued at about $14.5 million. They're contributing another $2.5 million to the old courthouse. We have that as a commitment from them. Another $6 million for the roof of the museum. So they are a partner, and they're contributing money as well as expertise.
I guess my follow-up is this, is, has our congressmen, senators, people that we've been sending to Washington DC for the last 20 years?
Sure.
Have they dropped the ball here?
Well, I don't think so. I think that this, the situation with the park, the national park here, an urban park in Missouri, is similar to parks across the country, urban and rural. And I think, in fact, that our congressional delegation have done a great deal to help us in Missouri for transportation, for parks, for many, many projects on which I've worked in my career. And I don't think they have dropped the ball.
Terry, a couple things I'd say. Number one, Wall Street Journal, how do they advertise the fact that St. Louis is becoming a banking center? They put the arch in the background of their little photo. Another thing I would say, this, these inequities just creep in the circumstances we deal with. As you may know in times past, there's been discussion about how many people from St. Charles go to use the zoo and the other cultural institutions in the city of St. Louis, and we made no contribution toward that, but we still, the number of visitors who go to the zoo, I think, St. Charles, I believe, has at least its population percentage, and it may exceed its population percentage in terms of visitors. Now, at some point, you know, maybe it's our turn to carry a little bit of a burden for the arch, because they're carrying the burden of letting our kids go down to the zoo for no admission fee and whatnot through the zoo museum tags.
Well, thank you all for coming this evening and explaining this to us. You make a very compelling argument, and it's a very good presentation. Appreciate your time. Thank you. We're over, but go ahead.
Okay, Maggie, do we know who "we" is yet? Do you have a ...
Which we are.
You've been using "we" referring to your organization. Do you have a board set up?
Our board is in formation right now. We're aiming to have about 11 board members. We, I can tell you, we have seven now. We have asks out for other board members to be added to the board. I can, I can tell you.
Okay, no, that's fine. As soon as you know, you'll ...
Yeah, we'll know very, very shortly.
Susan, where can we get the plan that was agreed to on December 11th?
I have it with me. I'm happy to leave it.
Okay. I mean, is it on a website or something?
Yes, we did post it on our website.
Okay.
And we also sent it out on our press.
And then with regard to, the actual statute requires that this money be used to supplement, not replace?
Correct.
Federal money. And the last thing, you are here asking these people to put it on the ballot.
It's our goal for you to consider that the St. Charles County residents would have the same right to choose a St. Louis city and St. Louis county.
Okay, we have the last two quick questions. Mr. Cronin?
Why not take the $200 to $250 million that you're going to get from private donations and use that to fix the arch, and let us take care of our trails and parks in this county?
Well, I can answer that from my perspective, and anyone else can add to it. I do think that it's important for us to own the arch as a regional icon. It's going to benefit the region economically, and I think as a shared responsibility, it's one of those situations where one plus one equals three. And I think people, I would include people in Illinois, who work and spend money in Missouri, are going to benefit from this. And that's how a region works. We live, work, and shop in a variety of places, and we all enjoy the arch, and we're all proud of it. proud of the arch. And I think it's going to be beneficial for us to share the responsibility.
And the last question.
Yeah, I think it's important for you guys to give us a little, for me, anyway, a little more reasons, better reasons, why St. Charles County would be involved, such as, you keep referring economics and regionalism, but you haven't shared anything with us about jobs. You haven't shared anything with us about financial impact as far as how much revenue is... Do we have numbers on, okay, so many more people are going to come out to the Y and just because they're coming to the arch, and then they're coming to...
Right.
Those are the kind of things I need to know.
You bet.
You know, so you can share with us factual information to say, "This has the potential to generate another $100 million in tourism dollars," or whatever.
Right.
But I haven't heard that today.
Where do we find that?
You want to, we have, have the economic information.
Okay, is it on your website?
It's not. Some of it belongs to City Arch River. Great Rivers Greenway did an economic study on the riverfront, and I can make that available as well.
If you could, email it to the municipal staff, and they'll make sure we hold copies.
Okay, sure, sounds good.
Last one. Just on an appreciative note, I want to thank Greenway for all they've done for St. Charles County. We've gained a lot from what this taxes, what we've given to this tax. It came back to us in many, many ways, and as a council, I appreciate what you've done for us.
Thank you. You all have been a great partner to the district, and we really appreciate what you all have done as well.
Very good. Get it from me.
And thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
While we were supposed to see you, you seemed like you were Christmas.
All right, thank you guys.